...2015 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us, please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Craig.
God rest your head, Father. We thank you this day and we thank you for all the blessings you give us. You bless us all, Father. We thank you, Dad. We thank you this Thanksgiving time of the year. Thank you for the culture that sets us out of town. We're all thankful. Let's be truly thankful for those who have given to share with our fellow men and all the good that you give us. We thank you, Dad. And thank you for what you've done to give us this opportunity. We mention our prayers. We really mention our prayers. We believe in prayers. We thank you, Dad. We thank you for that. For the opportunity to do that in a way we can. Pray, Father, that you be able to listen to this speech and be able to listen to this video in the last hour surprise.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Did you call the roll, please, Gal?
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Craig Lynch.
Chair.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes for our October 12th meeting. I'll call on Vice Chair Mike Kush.
Mr. Chair, I have the minutes that you're here in order. So about as soon as it doesn't approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. We have one item that's been withdrawn. Item 62A, number 152083, that's Lewis Downs. We will not be discussing that item tonight. Item six is new business. Item six, A1, the item number is 15-2082, The Retreat at Pinnacle Hills, Section 1. Seventeen lots on 5.6 acres. Zone located along Elia's Drive, west of Thompson Road. Park Trust Development LLC is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And just want to say a good evening to all the commissioners tonight. This meeting is, as we know, the November-December meeting is a little bit different. I know the Platts and plan review is a little more cumbersome in this room, but since this is the only meeting we have of the month, and we have our public hearings as well, it's a little bit of a necessary evil that we have to do it in this capacity tonight. But the first plat on our agenda tonight, again, The Retreat at Pinnacle Hills, this is a final plat approval for seventeen lots. The rezoning, sorry, the zoning of this property was approved back in May of last year. The Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan for this development at their July 28, 2014 meeting. This final plat that you're seeing for the first section is consistent with that preliminary plan. One item I do want to bring to your attention, you'll notice that the proposed road name of Cayman Drive, right here, the original name that was given to this road in the Pinnacle Hills subdivision is actually RK 6Cina Drive. I don't, there's not, there's only two lots that abut this particular road, and both of them are addressed off the Pinnacle Hills Drive. So it shouldn't be a major issue to change the road name here, but that is something that the applicant will have to do through the road board. Greg Brooks is here, our highway superintendent, if you have any questions about the process for him, but that should be pretty easy to affect. Again, there are no actual address changes that would have to be done as both of those face Pinnacle Hills Drive. We did do our review. We did have a number of comments, really what I call more housekeeping. The plat was in pretty good order to begin with, but they appeared to have addressed our comments. I'm not sure if Mike has any other comments.
No, the plat is in good order.
Okay. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat, please.
Second, all those in favor of the motion, any other discussion, I guess? All those in favor of the motion to approve item number 15-2082, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Motion.
Item 62, of course, has been withdrawn. Item 6A3, item number is 15-2084, Twin Oak Point, Section 1. Two lots on 1.17 acres, zoned RM, located along Twin Oak Drive. Donald L. Bruce is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was included on the Planning Commission's September 28, 2015 agenda, but was withdrawn prior to the meeting. Just to give you an idea of what that looked like, this what, well, hold on just a second here, let me zoom this just a little bit. Okay. Just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at here. This is Twin Oak Drive down here. This is Last Cassis Pike, so you're kind of looking at it in reverse, in a sense. The original application was to just extend the cul-de-sac off of Twin Oak Drive with a number of lots around the cul-de-sac. Staff had a couple of issues with this. First of all, the detention areas, as shown on the plan, were not on an individual lot per county regulations. They're kind of included, there's one right here that was included with these lots in the back, and then there was another one in this area. But again, they were just drainage easements throughout these different lots. They weren't actually on their own individual lot. The second issue had to do with water service in the area. The applicant was asking for the ability to use sprinkler, residential sprinkler systems in this development. There's a 20-inch line here located on Last Cassis Pike, which is about 700, 800 feet away from that. Staff's concern at the time and what we relayed to the applicant was, you know, the sprinkler regulation, when it was written, was not intended to be used in a manner to substitute for the ability of extending a water line that would have the ability to support fire hydrants and fire protection in that regard. It wasn't an either-or kind of a thing. It was really no situations where the water line may have been miles away, and there was really no practical way to get it to the site. So those are the responses that we made to the applicant. They eventually pulled the preliminary plan off of the agenda. They resubmitted this final plat that's before us tonight. What they're showing is these two lots right here against this Twin Oak Drive, this is Last Cassis Pike. They are showing a fire hydrant being placed right here, which this does meet the 1,000-foot requirement. Now, one of the issues that we had was originally, the original submittal showed these two lots, and this was for future development. So we asked the development, or asked the developer, excuse me, that we wanted to see a master plan, if they weren't going to go with the master plan originally back in, that they were proposing in September. And this is what was submitted at that point. They've got these two lots, and they're showing another two lots, then this, this remaining acreage right through here. Still not exactly sure what's going to be going on back here, but staff wants to reiterate that, you know, because the line is so close in this regard, that we feel that this line should be extended out here if this is going to be developed in any kind of manner in the future. So with that, I mean, two-lot subdivisions are typically something that can be approved by staff. They are proposing and showing a small amount of right-of-way dedication here in the front, which is why it's having to come before the Planning Commission tonight. So the applicant is present. You know, I told them that we're, the applicant's design engineer today, as we're going to be bringing this up for discussion at the Planning Commission, these topics that we have discussed. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and again, the applicant is present. Besides the issue, before I have those issues discussed, I will say that the other comments that we had have been addressed on the plat.
Doug, I have a question. Would you, would you go to the other, scroll down to the page that had all the lots?
The, the first one I showed? Okay.
It, this is where I got confused. Did we approve this one already?
No. This, this was withdrawn.
This is what he brought at one time, but was withdrawn.
Correct. Yeah, this was never considered by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so this is, that drawing is off the table at this point, right?
It appears that way, yes, sir.
So he's come back with a new drawing, just showing those two lots.
Correct.
And everything to the south, I guess, is undetermined.
Right. Now, the master plan, when we asked him to submit a revised master plan, of course, he shows the two lots here that he's asking for, then he's showing another two lots, kind of on the other side, and then he's showing this is remaining acreage, is what he's doing. That's what he's proposing now. The, let me just bring that up here, I can show you. He's showing, this is, this is the revised master, this is what he's showing, this is the two lots he's asking for, and these are the other two at some point in the future, and then this is all remaining acreage.
Tell me again about the, the hydrant does support, right? It's, it's within distance.
Correct. For, at least for these two lots. I'm not as certain about these two. It's close, if it's not, but it's close.
Doug, what's our timeframe if somebody comes in with two lots, and then we approve that, and then two more weeks, and two more, and two more, and two? Do we have, we have, is it just a?
I know that's something we've discussed in the past. I don't think we actually have anything that we actually codified in that regard. And the reason we never did is, there's so many situations out there, it would be hard to just say, if you subdivide a piece of property, you can't subdivide it again for six months, because if somebody needs to come in and do a minor lot line shift or something like that, I mean, that would fall under a resubdivision. So it's, it's hard to tailor it in a way, I understand what the intent would be, but it's hard to tailor it in such a way that you would do that without any unintended consequences, you know, of the, of the littler things that you weren't intending to capture.
Doug, I have a question. Is on track one, is there, is there an existing CUD easement in place that would support what will be needed for a future subdivision? The, the tract to the west of what we're discussing, right in there?
Well, there is an existing CUD, 30-foot CUD water line easement along this property. Now, beyond that, you know, going back toward this property, back toward here, you can see the water line, as it's shown on the plans, actually in the right-of-way. Now, Ms. Wood with CUD is here, looks like she's standing up to possibly address. My understanding is if this were ever to be upsized and relocated, it would be relocated on this side of the road, on the south, well, I guess that'd be the north side, the north side of the road, but Ms. Wood is here, she could probably clarify that a little more.
Good morning. Jennifer Wood with CUD. So I have spoken with the applicant about this, and what we would require if they did a line extension or upgrade is an easement to go across those properties that they're proposing to plat, because we are in the right-of-way. We haven't done a design on an upgrade for this water line to date, but speaking with our engineering consultant about where we would put, theoretically put a water line, should we upgrade this water line, or should the applicant have to upgrade, upgrade the water line? It would have to be on easement. I guess they're showing a deed book and page number there. I wasn't aware that we had actually a 30-foot easement there. We have a 4-inch water line, and it is in the right-of-way currently, but that is something that we would require if they were to upgrade that.
Okay, would it be on the south side or the north side? This, this is, this is actually the south side. The plan's upside down, yeah.
Um, I don't know without doing a field visit, to be honest with you, but when I spoke with our engineering consultant, I do, I mean, theoretically, it really could go on either side unless there was something that was preventing it to in the field, so. And depending on whether or not it would be issued, that 4-inch line in service while the line was being upgraded to, so. Questions for me while I'm up here. Okay, thank you.
Doug, just for clarification. There's been a preliminary on this, the preliminary was actually pulled.
That's correct.
And since it's only two lots, it doesn't require a preliminary.
Yes, kind of. I mean, technically speaking, that is true. Yes, sir.
Doug, would there be a reason why the first two lots are coming in, and what it looks like there's two more lots waiting in the shadows to come out at some point in time? I mean, but being four lots, would that make it have to come to the Planning Commission, whatever? I mean?
Well, the reason it's having to come before the Planning Commission, again, is because of the right-of-way dedication. If it weren't for that, we could just do it administratively. Now, he's, again, they're showing the five-foot right-of-way dedication along the frontage here, along both these lots, so that would indicate to me that they're not around this remaining acreage. So if these other two ever came in at some point in the future, they'd have to do the same thing. They'd have to come before you because of the right-of-way dedication. But I think what staff's concerned is that, you know, that preliminary, again, being off the table, you know, kind of what Craig was, was kind of alluding to earlier, we don't want to be in a situation where it's just kind of piecemealed in there. You know, at some point, if he decides he wants to do the remainder of this property, we still want to see that water line extended to, to meet this development, unless the Planning Commission feels that, you know, a waiver would be in order, and it would grant that. But again, staff's position is that, you know, the, the sprinkler provision that we approved wasn't designed, at least the intent of it, wasn't for these situations where the water line is, is in, in pretty reasonable distance. You know, again, if it's a mile or two down the road, I can certainly understand the cost of trying to upsize that side, that, that long of a line can be impractical, but I mean, we're only talking, you know, probably less than 1,000 feet, you know, to get to the entire property. So that, that was staff's main concern.
But if we were just looking at these two lots, if this had come in, what we see on the screen right there now, without the other conversation about earlier, it might not have even made it to the Planning Commission.
Probably wouldn't have. If it, if it wasn't for the right-of-way dedication, and like you said, absent of the other conversations we've had, we, this would have been a staff approval.
Just looking at what we see up here now, I don't really see a reason not to approve it, but we need to put something in writing, or that it be known that before we start extending a road back to the other part, we need to see more water. And I don't know, I don't know if the next two lots trigger that or what. How many lots do you get off a 4-inch line? Of course, if I was the developer, I'd be wanting to sit back and wait for somebody else to put that water line in, because, you know, you hear stories of somebody putting a water line, and three years later, CUD goes out and upgrades the line in that area, and then they would have got it for free. So he may well be just going to wait till that water line is, is upgraded and do the development at that time, and I, and, and that's perfectly okay, I gue, I'm guessing, if the, if the water line gets approved, but I'm just wondering if it's any reason not to approve these two lots as is presented right now.
Yeah, I, I guess the big thing with me is, again, of course, I've, I've expressed my concerns, but if nothing else, I think we put the developer on notice that, you know, we're watching, and that we understand that, you know, if it's just going to be the other two lots, and he's just going to acreage-track the remaining of it, okay, you know, that may not be the, you know, that, that we may not require anything beyond that, but that if he does want to do something even remotely similar to what was approved origi, or what was proposed originally, again, didn't come to the Planning Commission, then, you know, we're going to expect to see some infrastructure improvements.
And between what lots two and what will potentially be lot three and four, the next two lots, I don't see where it says how wide that is.
It's about 80, 87 feet.
Okay, now, how many, how much frontage do you need? You've got 16.9 acres, you have five-acre tracts, have to have how much frontage?
50 foot.
Huh?
50.
50 foot, so he'd have to get an easement to have more than two, but a, a variance get more than two back there anyway.
He'd have to have a private easement, right?
One of the issues I had, there's a, a slight ridge that runs like in this direction right here. They had originally showed a detention area to collect stormwater from the few lots that would drain this way. So if these lots are approved, and a detention pond is created here, they won't be part of a homeowners association, they won't have any requirements to maintain a pond that will serve them. So that's one of the things I was kind of pointing out. And it was, it was submitted as Phase 1, so assuming that there were more phases on
Didn't we have some discussion a while back about approving sections and looking at the overall development plan before we start approving sections? Didn't we?
Well, that, that's what the whole process is supposed to, to be at this point. The preliminary plan comes in first, and then the final plat's based on that approved preliminary, that that's how the process is, was designed to work.
Section 1 bothers me. That indicates that there's more coming, just like Mike said, indicates more coming, and we haven't seen the overall plan.
Right, well, again, we've seen, let me pull that up. I mean, this is, I guess, what they're calling their master plan at this point. But, I mean, personally, I'd feel a little more comfortable if, if we had a better idea of what was going to be going on back in here, and the applicant is present, and he's raising his hand, it might not be, I mean, up to you, Mr. Chairman, if, if you wanted to hear from him.
I'm Don Bruce. I live at 1911 Haynes Drive in Murfreesboro. We had hoped to get about 25 to 26 lots out of this property, but we couldn't meet the water demand. Like Mr. Demasi says, 20-inch line is 800 feet down the road, but according to what my estimates was, it's going to cost $40,000 or more to get it up there to my property. In addition, we was going to have to have at least another 10-foot easement across my neighbor's property that they just bought and give $300,000 for. I talked to the lady. She handles, she's a spokesman for her and her husband, and she told me that she was going to give him more right-of-way, and she didn't want her property messed up. So that's when we came up with this design. The reason we didn't have four lots is because the two lots we're showing for future, maybe, I may build my own self a house there. So I would use that corner over there for my house. I'm never going to do anything else with the property, except I've had one of the neighbors ask me about buying five acres to go with his property, to make him own up to 15 or 16 acres. When I saw what the cost is going to be, I took what money I had set aside, do the infrastructure out there, I went and bought some other land somewhere else. So when I, when I get through with the two lots or four lots and the remaining property, I'm through out there. So that's.
Mr. Bruce, does that, does that mean that you're only planning on up forever, just doing four lots?
Four lots on my own, plus the remaining 16 acres or so. And then, like I say, I have one neighbor that's asked me about buying five acres of it to go with his. So anyway, I'm not going to do anything else out there myself.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Bruce while he's up here?
Thank you.
Doug, if, if it wasn't for the right-of-way, staff would make the decision?
If it wasn't for the right-of-way, it would be a staff review, that's correct.
Staff decision would be what?
Well, like I said, absent the right-of-way, they've, absent these discussions that we've had today about the water line, rather, excuse me, they've met the comments that we had. I think the important thing is just to, for the developer to be put on notice that if his plans change, again, we're watching, and we're going to be expecting that water line to be extended.
So it makes a requirement to your, your, your?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like this has probably been handled in a roundabout way, coming in with a major plat with a lot of, the lots, and then coming back with Phase 1 on the other plat, which it might or might not, could or should have had. If this had come to us, then the point it is now with just the first two lots that we're considering tonight, if it would have ever even gotten to us at all, I feel sure we would have voted for it, and I don't see a legal reason to turn it down. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 15-2084. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yes.
One opposed. That motion carries. Item number 6B, rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6B1, item number is 15-A014, Scott Gravy. Location 4925 Veterans Parkway. The county commissioner is Trey Gooch. The size of the site is approximately 10 acres. Tax map 93, parcel 2.18. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is CS. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Veterans Parkway. You can see on the aerial photo on the screen, the area immediately across the street is in the city limits of Murfreesboro. I believe this is part of the property that the Middle Tennessee Electric is looking to, at some point in the future, build their future campus. No, I don't think there's any imminent plans to do that. Mr. Pinion, you may have more information on that, but nothing imminent that I'm aware of, but it is within the city limits. This is Shores Road right here, 840, it's just a little bit up the road. The applicant operates and maintain, operates a property maintenance company from this property. Approval was originally granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals back in 1989. Amendment to the original conditional use permit was issued in 1999 in order to allow the applicant to expand his business. We did include copies of those materials in your agenda packets for your reference. County zoning enforcement officials received a complaint regarding a recent addition on one of the buildings. After discussing the situation with our building codes director, it was determined that any subsequent buildings or building additions would need site plan approval and go through the permitting process. The applicant also discussed the situation with planning and engineering staff, and it was agreed at that point that this business has grown to the point where commercial zoning would be appropriate. The applicant's also submitted some materials that are within your agenda packets. You can see that there are a number of structures and vehicles on the property. His hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. They do have parking lot sweeper trucks that leave the site about 8:30 p.m. They work through the night, and then they return to the property between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. The business has about 35 to 40 employees. Six of them are actually employed on the property, in the office, five of them in the office, one of them in the shop. The property is used for the operation of the business, vehicle storage, maintenance, storage of supplies, and administrative activities. There's an existing house on the property where the applicant lives, and he will continue to live there as well. Staff did just, we received a couple of phone calls on this particular application. I didn't speak to anybody personally, but I know some of my other staff did. No calls as far as any opposition or anything like that, just really general information is what they're looking at. Again, this business is, has been in existence since the late 1980s. It started off as a home-based business, it really has just expanded to the point, again, that we feel the commercial zoning is appropriate. Also, just from staff's standpoint, I do think that this area is in a state of transition to a large extent. Veterans Parkway, as you all know, was widened to a five-lane road within the last few years. You see a planned development that's actually here at the corner of Shores Road between here and 840, that's in the city limits, that does have a commercial element to it. Again, the eventual campus for Middle Tennessee Electric located across the street. On the other side of Veterans, at Highway 96, you're seeing a new Kroger being constructed again in the city limits of Murfreesboro. So I don't think that this is really out of character with what has been happening in this area. Plus, again, as far as the appearance of the property, you can't see all this really from the street when you first pull into the driveway. You see the applicant's house, all this and other material and buildings, everything is really in the back. Eventually, if this is approved, the applicant will need to submit a site plan showing the buildings that need permits and whatnot, and again, any future expansions would have to be permitted as well. to be permitted as well through a site plan approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Let me just do a quick, sorry, quick slide here. This is looking, this will be looking toward the south, down Veterans Parkway, so looking directly across the street, that's looking back up to the north toward eight forty and Shores Road, again, looking onto the property here. And you can see the applicant's house right here, and you can kind of see some of the driveways back over in this area, but you can sort of see some of the buildings right back there. And again, a little shot of the property. Again, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
F. When we declare the public hearing open, yes? We're ready for a public hearing. At this time, we'll open up a public hearing for item number fifteen dash eight zero one four. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address. Hi.
Teresa, I'm in the left picture, the cul-de-sac. Right there, I'm the last house on the left, on the other side of the tree line from the business that's applying for this change.
In Royal Glen?
Yes, right where the red dot is, that's my house.
Okay.
I wasn't involved in any complaints or phone calls so far on this property. I have lived there since two thousand and two, wasn't aware when I moved in of the business on the other side of the tree line. There is loud noises coming from that business as it is right now. I guess it's the trucks coming, loading, unloading, and they do it early morning hours before, eight o'clock in the morning, usually between six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, they're waking up the babies next door. So, there is a noise issue already with this business, so I am highly concerned about it increasing in size by any means. But what my major concern over the noise is, I've dealt with the noise for many years, is that we have been working with the County Royal Glen Homeowners Association the past few years. The property adjacent to the business that has applied for the change was zoned agricultural and had built that huge horse stables, are you aware of that? I know nobody could police it when it was being built because it was zoned agricultural. But anyway, due to that change in topography next door to this business, we have had a huge increase of rainwater, stormwater coming in and threatening to flood our homes in Royal Glen. We have worked with the county, seeking their help, advice, anything they could do to help us. As Royal Glen's Homeowners Association, we are responsible for maintaining detention pond out that street right south of me, right there is where all of the stormwater goes. Originally, I thought just for Royal Glen, but now we are picking up for the agricultural property, and I am concerned if this property next door also changes, we're going to be collecting an even increased volume of water coming and hitting our properties. Any day that it storms one inch, two inches, I wish some of y'all would drive through and see what's happening to our properties. We'll never be able to sell these homes if somebody comes on a rainy day. So, I'm just asking, you know, I know, I don't know if you'll stop this change in code or not, but if you do let them move forward with the changes, I do ask that you require them to keep the tree lines, so we keep the sight line, so we're not looking at this business. Also, maybe, I don't know what you can do as far as the sound barrier, because it is quite loud when these trucks are coming in and out of this property early in the morning and late at night. So, anything you guys can do to help us. Regretfully, I didn't have time to rally the troops today. I've been out of town for the past week, but we, as a neighborhood, have been extremely concerned and diligent trying to deal with this water issue and sound issues. I've never complained about the sound, but since it's been brought up, please take that into consideration also if you do make changes to this property. Any questions?
Mike, you want to comment on the water issue that was just brought up?
Right. We did investigate the horse stables. They have three detention ponds, I believe there's one here, there's one right by their outfall, there's a drain that comes through Royal Glen, it kind of snakes its way back to a large depressed area where their detention is taken care of. We have made some, with the help of the highway department, made some improvements to the roadside ditches to help the drainage flow through, so we're hoping that would help, and we're just monitoring as, as we go along.
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, because, I mean, whenever a piece of property is owned commercial, of course, there is buffering that's required. This would be a type-two buffer. There's different ways to accomplish that, it can be a solid visual screen and plantings or just plantings. I mean, honestly, the applicant would be encouraged to keep all that because it's acting as a buffer, as it is now. So, as of this point, he has not indicated any plans to take any of that down, I would imagine he would keep it all there, because it keeps him in compliance, quite frankly. So, I don't really foresee that changing, but if for some reason he wanted to make some changes, it would have to meet a type-two buffer requirement based on our zoning ordinance.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I have a question for Mr. Demossi. I would think by this being brought in to a CS zone, it would actually give the county more latitude as far as controlling what is done over there, would it not?
Yes, sir, I believe it would.
And I will give the applicant credit, we find people up here all the time that have been out there and created businesses without getting any permission. He went to the BZA in nineteen eighty-eight, he went back in nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine, I believe you said, when he changed, so it's not like he was found to be in violation. I'm very familiar with the area. From the road, you can't even tell it's there, and, and in my opinion, doing this will actually make a lot more oversight to go on as far as what does affect the Royal Glen subdivision. And to me, it's just a win-win situation. It gives the county oversight to enforce buffers and things like that, and especially if there's any additions, there'll have to be site plans and things, and we'll have to make sure there's any additional buffers that are needed in light preview, you know, review of light, lighting and things like that. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments. And if I jumped in front of anybody else wanting to talk, I apologize.
Second, before we have discussion. Motion and a second to approve, other discussion?
Mr. Hughes, would you elaborate a little bit more on those detention ponds that are surrounding that new horse barn? And if, in fact, she has noticed an increase in stormwater, then perhaps there is something afoul?
Right. What, what we investigated, we even, when this was developed, it was developed as an ag, a horse barn, so we really weren't in the review process, but we went back to the owner and asked them for drainage calculations so we could review them and look at them, and we were satisfied for what they submitted to us. We haven't been, they haven't done as-built plans to see if the ponds were built according to their designs, but they look, apparently look like they are what they've designed. There's kind of a situation in Royal Glen, it, some of the ditches were silted in, the drainage doesn't follow the, the road exactly, it kind of goes between some lots and then kind of snakes kind of corners and goes between a couple houses and turns, and there, there were some needed roadside ditch improvements and some cleaning of ditches that the highway department helped us with, and, and I believe that's helped. But, all in all, it drains back to a large sinkhole back here that they, they're using for their detention area, so not the best situation, but it, it works.
Does that probably question does track?
Yes, sir, right, right. There's, there's kind of a ridge, there, there, like I said, there's a pond here, and I think there's another one right here, right before it cuts through this drainage easement in Royal Glen. But they, they have made a lot of modifications, and, and from what I can tell, it's in good order.
Mr. Chairman, I, that being said, I would like to recommend that perhaps during the next few days of, or the next time we have a few days of heavy rainfall, perhaps Mike can just drive by and just make sure there's nothing that's short-circuited from those detention ponds by the barn west to where the flooding complaint that Ms. Teresa talked about.
Yes, sir. I have, I have a rainy day list that I, I'll put that on there.
No discussion?
Well, if you say buffering there, is that an added part, or is there no way into?
Well, it appears, just by looking at the aerial photo and the shots that he, that he provided to us as part of the application, it's a pretty dense buffer. Now, I'll be the first to admit, I haven't been out there and actually done the measurement, you know, as far as if it's actually a thirty-foot strip or not, but whenever he submits the site plan, we'll take a look at that. And again, if we feel that there's some areas that need some additional plantings, we can recommend that, but I can't imagine that he's going to get into tearing any of that out. I mean, that's well-established at this point, and he can count that as required elements for his buffer. So, it's, just from appearances, it appears to be sufficient, but we'll be able to plug some gaps in time if, if need be.
I know I second it, but if we, if we had a, or if there was a motion on the table to turn it down, he would still operate under the existing conditional use.
Yes.
So, this is an opportunity to clean up a conditional use from years ago that, you know, a lot of times they were for five years or seven years or something like that, this one's been in place, what, twenty-five years?
Right, yeah, there was no timeframe on this one, and.
There's no timeframe on it, but this is a good time to, it's lasted that long, it ought to be commercial. And I'll take a good look at the buffering, some cedars or pines or something that, that keeps the needles in the wintertime makes a big difference, I can tell a big difference at home.
Questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number fifteen dash A zero one four, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Let me point out that this rezoning request will be heard before the Rutherford County Commission on Thursday, December the seventeenth, six PM, in this courtroom. Ms. Knight, did you have an additional question?
Thursday, December seventeenth, six PM, in this courtroom, before the county commission.
Item number six B two, the item number is fifteen dash five zero zero three, amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning setbacks for mini warehouse developments. Our planning staff is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll recall from our last day meeting, we had a pretty good discussion on the setbacks for mini warehouse regulations. You'll recall that our current setback is sixty-five feet for all buildings and storage activities. After some discussion, the planning commission felt that maybe that needed to be relaxed, asked staff to take a look into that. We presented a report at the last meeting. We've updated that report just a little bit with the discussion that we had at our last day meeting, as well as I added a, another city to the list that I heard back from after our meeting. It was actually the, the city of Laverne. Looking at my chart, it looks like I wasn't doing the alphabet quite right, I put it after Lebanon as opposed to before, so I apologize for that. But you can see their setbacks are actually more substantial than even what we require, at least from the road frontage standpoint, two-hundred-and-twenty feet from any road in their commercial two district, but they are allowed in industrial zones following district setbacks. We had three options, as you recall, I'm not going to get into just the majority of the report unless there are specific questions. I figured you've all heard it once, probably don't want to hear it again, but you know, we had three options. Option one was just to remove the sixty-five-foot requirement. Our second option was to amend it, to reduce it or adopt some language that would allow to reduce the distance of screening requirements or met, or just leave it as it is. After a lot of discussion, most of the discussion really concerned options one and two. Some of the commissioners felt that eliminating the requirement would be the simplest solution. While the consensus appeared, at least from staff standpoint, was to reduce the requirement, several other commissioners also favored keeping the sixty-five-foot setback for those structures that would have access on both sides of the building instead of just one side. So, the approved recommendation from the planning commission was to use the language staff provided in the following section, which I'll read here, with the last sentence about the blank walls of masonry, concrete block or similar material not being allowed, being modified. So, you'll see on the last page of that report, which was included as part of your agenda packets, what I've done is a setback for such activities, buildings or storage, outdoor storage, should be a minimum of sixty-five feet, provided that if there is access on only one side of the building, the setbacks of that district can apply. The buildings may be used as part of the required buffer, and this is where we kind of amended that other language about the masonry wall and everything. If the design and appearance is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals or Planning Commission as applicable, consistent with section eleven oh four of the ordinance, which deals with the landscaping. I think that covered the concerns of the commission. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions at this time, or we can massage this a little more if we need to. But regardless, before this goes, before the Board of Commissioners, we'll need a public hearing and recommendation from the planning commission.
Questions? We've discussed this enough, or we ready for our public hearing? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll have our public hearing for item number fifteen dash five zero zero three, amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning setbacks for mini warehouse developments. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman, based on the improved language and the debate we had at our last meeting in regards, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this and go ahead and move it forward to full commission.
Doug, I have a question. This does give us the flexibility to put the building on the outside of the property essentially, and, and the traffic on the inside.
Correct, yes, sir.
Eliminating the lights to the neighbor next door.
Yes, it will, yes, sir.
That answer, I'll second the motion.
Motion to approve and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number fifteen dash five zero zero three, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. We have our meeting for, that was scheduled for the twenty-third of this month, of course, has been canceled for our Thanksgiving celebration. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December fourteenth, six PM, here in the courthouse. We'll have our annual holiday dinner before that. Gal is going to be sending out a potluck request here this week, so y'all confirm that you will attend, and what dish you're going to bring, and that will be up in the mess at, at the planning commission office. Staff reports or other business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. An email was sent out to the planning commission regarding some training opportunities coming up next Monday, the sixteenth. In the morning, you'll recall, we've tried to have Mr. Michael Skipper from the Nashville Area MPO, we've tried to have him here a couple of times. One time, our meeting went a lot longer than anticipated, and then the next time, he got the time wrong, so we're even on that regard. But we're going to try again next Monday. This is going to be open to both the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've invited them as well to help get you some of your training hours. Most of you here have obtained the hours necessary, but if you have questions regarding, if you do need some training hours, let me know, and I've got a chart, I can help you with that. That afternoon, well, the, the morning session will be about nine-thirty to. That afternoon, well, the morning session will be about nine-thirty to say about eleven, eleven-thirty-ish or so. It'll be a presentation on the effect of land use and public health, kind of the link between those two. It's something that the Nashville Area MPO has done a lot of study on and in planning realms, it's actually getting a lot of attention these days as well. In the afternoon, we have Mr. Sam Edwards coming from the Greater Nashville Regional Council. I think everybody in here is familiar with him, except Lee maybe, I don't know if you've ever met him or not, but he's going to be coming to doing some training as well, probably focusing more on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but if enough planning commissioners indicate a willingness to come to the afternoon session, I'll have him throw in some planning commission stuff too, he'll be happy to do that. Also, I'm going to try to talk with him about maybe sprinkling in, as you know, that we, planning commission members are required to have one hour of their four hours beyond private property rights. And so, you know, we might be able to kind of kill two birds with one stone there. So just to let you know about that. Also, I was talking to Chairman Phillips prior to the meeting regarding the traffic sheds public hearing that we're discussing. At this point, as you recall, we decided to kind of wait until after the new year to attack that, if you will, just because of the schedules around the holidays, things start really getting hectic, it's just hard to get everybody in one room. After speaking to Jeff about it, rather than try to put it on a night of a regular planning commission meeting, because it's always kind of hit and miss, we don't know what we're going to have as far as calendar or a schedule is concerned for the number of public hearings, he recommended maybe looking at just a separate date where we can invite county commissioners and everybody to the meeting. So I'll be sending an email out here, probably within the next day or so, just kind of giving you an idea of what dates might be good for that. So just kind of an FYI on that. So just start looking at your calendars in January and we'll see what we can work out. That's pretty much all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm good.
Questions for Doug as it relates to that planning training next Monday?
It starts at, the morning session will be at nine-thirty, and these are all in the mezzanine, by the way. I sent the email out, put all the information in and didn't put the location. So it'll be in the mezzanine, nine-thirty to say eleven, eleven-thirty probably for the morning session. And then in the afternoon, it would start at one-thirty, probably go about two hours, two and a half hours, again in the mezzanine.
You said that we had to have the rights?
Sir.
We had that?
We have not. So that's something, again, we're going to see if we can't have Sam, you know, kind of sprinkle some of that, and if not, we have till the end of the year, so we might be able to figure something else out for that.
So everybody, BZ, didn't have one?
Just the planning commission, the BZA doesn't, just the planning commission.
But when you come back in the session to get that?
That's what I'm going to try to take care of, yes, sir. One-thirty to about, about three-thirty, fourish, something like that, yes, sir. But if you aren't able to make it, we'll make some other arrangements. Again, we have till the end of the year and it's so wide open as to far as what we could talk about, we can make it work. So if that, if you can't make it to that, we'll find something else that you can do.
I already told you about, in terms of those sessions?
Right around four.
You could all do it?
Yes, you could. Somewhere between three, three and four hours, but again, there's other options. So, and well, for those that need it, we'll make sure that there are some other options we have available that we can make available to you, for those that might need it. Well, several of you actually, I know several of you have been in the Water Works University that CUD has put on. All those hours count, and if there were some discussion on there about private property rights, I don't know. I'll talk with Jennifer about it, Jennifer Wood from CUD, just to kind of get her take on some of the topics they talked about. I mean, some of those topics may qualify for that, and if that's the case, then those of you who have been to that, you'd be set. I mean, again, the training topics are so, it's such a wide array of what could be, what could be talked about and what could be taught, that it's, you know, we have a lot of options with that. That's all I have, sir.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We're adjourned.